My name is George Alcaraz. I'm the chairman of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. All our commissioners are here, and I'd like to just get started with Commissioner Costin with the prayer and Commissioner Parks with the pledge allegiance. Stand, please.
Eternal God, our Father, we thank you. We thank you, God, for this glorious day which you have made and this wonderful city in which we live. Now, Father, as we come to discuss the business of this great city, God, we ask that you would grant us of your wisdom and your understanding. Give us your guidance, God, that we may make the correct decision that is best suited for this Virginia Beach. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And at this time, I'd like all the commissioners and staff to introduce themselves, and we'll start over here at our legal advisor. Welcome.
Thank you. Tori Eisenberg, Associate Attorney for Land Use.
Michael Moch, the at-large representative.
Good afternoon. Naomi Estars, District One.
John Cromwell, District Two.
Mike Anderson, District Three.
Kathryn Beiler, District Four, which is generally the town center area up to Newtown Road.
George Alcaraz, District Five.
Holly Quayar, District Eight.
Brian Plumley, representing beautiful District Six.
Susan Hippen, District Seven, Salem High, Tallwood High, Regent University, and College Park.
John Costin, District Nine.
William Parks, representing District Ten.
Kaitlin Alcock, Planning Administrator for the Planning Department. Clerking to my left, we have Madison Eichels and Kristen Bauer. In the audience, we have Planning Director Kathy Warren, Deputy Director Carrie Buchholz. With our Planning Administration Team, we have Marcel Coleman and Elizabeth Noack. With our Comprehensive Planning Team, we have Hank Morrison and Rachel Miller. And then with our Zoning Administration Group, we have Zoning Administrator Kevin Kemp, Deputy Zoning Administrator Brandon Hackney, and Planner Garrett Cannigan.
All right, thank you. Next, I'd like to ask the clerk to describe the rules and order of business for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the Commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the Commission with respect and civility. As a courtesy to all in attendance, we request that if you have a cellphone, to please silence it for the duration of this public meeting. Following is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. The Order of Business for this public hearing, withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. The Consent Agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. The Regular Agenda. The Commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Today, we will have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or the representative first. Following the applicant or the representative, in-person speakers will be called next, and then the speakers participating via WebEx. Speakers in support or opposition of an item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group, such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. For WebEx speakers, once your name has been called, please pause for two to three seconds to begin to ensure the commissioners hear your complete remarks, as only one audio feed can be opened at a time. Do not ask, "Can you hear me?", as you will not be able to hear a response. If a speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, we will move on to the next speaker or the next order of business. Please note that the actions taken by the Commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the City Council. The Commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get started with the formal hearing, I'd like to ask our Vice Chair Quaylar to say some kind words.
Thank you very much. We'd like to just take this opportunity to thank our counsel, Kay Wilson, for her time with us on the Planning Commission and in the city of Virginia Beach. Anytime a team member leaves, it's always bittersweet because we will be missing her, and she has a whole new chapter ahead of her. And so, Kay, we're incredibly grateful for you to choose for choosing the city of Virginia Beach, to share your time and your talents as our legal counsel. Certainly, there's been complexity, there's been joy, there's maybe been a little frustration along the way, but it has been a pleasure getting to know you, and we wish you all of the best. I understand there is some travel in your immediate future, and I hope you know that you're always welcome to come back on a Wednesday and see how things were going. Which brings us to a welcome for Tori Eisenberg. And so, thank you for choosing us, and we look forward to getting to know you and working together to advance our city.
Kay, thank you. Would you like to say something? We've got time.
Tori keeps asking me if I'm nostalgic. I'm not. I'm looking forward to retirement. I think it's a great new chapter for me, and I'm looking forward to it. Not that I won't miss you and that I won't miss our second Wednesdays of the month, each and every month, but I am looking forward to retirement, and I wish you the best of luck. Okay, when we're ready for remote policy, I'll be back.
You may stay, then. So, we've got some things to take care of, and we'll go to remote policies if you wanted to say something, so I can just take a vote formally here.
Okay, we have two remote policies. One will be in effect from today until the 30th of June, and the other will be in effect from July 1 of '24 to July 1 of '25. They allow a member to call into a meeting as long as there is a quorum and they have a reason to do so. So, I think you can take one vote on both of those, and then we will put them in your minutes.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion for both remote policies?
I've got a motion, but before Kay goes, I just want to say I had the pleasure of serving on the City Wetlands Board from '02 to '07, whenever I was, and you were always on top of every detail coming in. You haven't changed. I figured you'd change just a little bit when I came on this board, but you hadn't changed at all. You've always stayed on everything, and we're certainly going to miss your diligent service to the community, and I want to thank you personally for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did anybody else want to say anything? Okay. Were you going to make a motion there, Mr. Plumley?
And I move to approve.
All right, got him. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Quaylar.
All right, this isn't on our virtual agenda, so I'm going to call a verbal vote for this first item. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Beiler?
Yes.
Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Cromwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Estars?
Yes.
Ms. Hippen?
Yes.
Mr. Moch?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Plumley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quayar?
Yes.
And Chairman Alcaraz?
Yes.
Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, the vote of policies have been recommended for approval.
All right, the next item we're going to do is I need a motion for the minutes for the May 8th, 2024 Planning Commission hearing.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Got a motion, Ms. Quaylar?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moch.
The vote is not open. By a vote of 11 to 0, the May 8th, 2024 minutes have been approved.
All right, thank you. The next order of business is for any agenda items that are going to be withdrawn or deferral. Are there any applicants here that want to withdraw their application? All right, there are none. Are there any applicants present that want to defer their application? If there is, please come forward. All right, Ms. Vice Chair, we have one that wants to defer indefinitely, number two.
Yes, and where's it going to be on the weather? No, that would be item 15, on WebEx.
Okay, so I recommend the agenda item number two, Lynn Haven Shopping Center, for an indefinite deferral.
I have a motion for indefinite deferral for item number two.
Second.
Second by Ms. Beiler. Vote's open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, item number two has been recommended for indefinite deferral.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'm going to pass it on to our Vice Chair to go ahead with the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We have 12 items on the consent agenda today, and these are applications that are recommended for approval by staff and the Planning Commission concurred, and there are no speakers signed up in opposition. Our first item is agenda item number one, city of Virginia Beach.
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the Commission. For the record, I'm Kevin Kemp, zoning administrator for the city. This first item is an amendment to Section 106 of the zoning ordinance, which describes the rules and procedures for the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is a cleanup amendment. The state recently passed legislation, Bill 413, which changed the notification requirement. This makes our ordinance consistent with that state legislation. Just to note, our current practices do adhere to the new state legislation. This just cleans it up. The new notification per our ordinance will be that notices shall be posted twice in a newspaper, not more than 28 days prior to a meeting, with a second notice not more than seven days before the meeting, and staff has recommended approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Okay, we'll then move forward to our next item, item numbers four and five. Autobell Car Wash. Is there a representative here today? Hello.
Hello, good afternoon. David Dahlman with Kimley Horn, here representing the Mammon Brothers Petroleum LLC for a new Autobell Car Wash. It's a replacement of an existing car wash on the existing property. We've reviewed and agree with the recommended proffers, and happily we'll be on the consent agenda.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You may be seated. And is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Moch to read this item into the record.
The applicant seeks to amend approvals from 2003 to redevelop a portion of the site with a new 3,350-square-foot automated tunnel car wash facility with eight vacuum stations. In staff's opinion, they have sought approval, and the Commission has done the same.
Thank you very much. Our next item is item number seven, Virginia Beach Commercial Center.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chairman. Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Virginia Beach Commercial Center LLC. The seven conditions as recommended in the staff report that Waddell did, and appreciate Kaitlin stepping in, are all acceptable to my client, and we appreciate being on the consent agenda.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this item being on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Beiler to read this item into the record.
The property in question is at 4944 Euclid Road. It is part of the Central Village District of the Pembroke SGA. It has been used as commercial parking lot since 2016. That is not anticipated to change. What this essentially will do is to acknowledge that it is a commercial parking lot, and there will be significant amount of landscaping and other improvements to the fencing so as to make it more visually attractive. This is just a five-year permission, and it will be reviewed because ultimately, we're hoping that this will be converted to some use that is more in keeping with the Pembroke SGA and is more community-centric. But for now, it will be an improvement.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item number is item number eight, Craig and Chris Kirby.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Mr. and Mrs. Kirby. This was an easy one, since it's the same conditions that were approved a couple years ago. Unfortunately, the civil engineer handling this wasn't familiar with the process of getting the resub plat done, and frankly, the one year is starting to be a problem across the board because of dealing with MERS and some of these servicers. It's very difficult. We appreciate being on the consent agenda. It will definitely get done within the next few months. The conditions are all accepted.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Parks to read this into the record.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to close a portion of the platted unnamed and unimproved alley adjacent to the rear lot line. As shown in the submitted street closure exhibit, the proposal includes closure of half of the 15-foot-wide alley totaling 563 square feet. City Council previously approved the closure of this portion on the alley on July 12, 2022, as mentioned by Mr. Burdon. Since there was no objection then, and there's still no opposition, we felt it was appropriate for the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. The next item is item number nine, Holly Road LLC. You might just want to stay up for a little bit.
Well, that was a surprise. The five conditions as recommended by staff are acceptable to the applicant, and we appreciate being on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Beiler to read this into the record.
This is for the parcel at 300 Bay Colony Drive and adjoining Western Parcel. It is zoned residential, undeveloped. This is the closing of the end of a road, and City Attorney's Office shall make the final determination regarding the ownership and the underlying fee. There is no opposition, and the conditions apparently are acceptable.
Thank you very much. Are there any abstentions on this item?
Brian Plumley, I'm abstaining on this matter.
And we have a record on file. Thank you very much, a letter. Okay, our next item, item number 10, Earthscapes Enterprises. Hello again.
I need the exercise. Again, this is a proffered rezoning. Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Earthscapes Enterprises LLC. Proffered rezoning, part of it B2, most of it B2 to I1, which is in keeping with what we should be doing out there, and greatly appreciate staff's assistance, Marcel, especially in working through some of the issues involving this piece of property. Appreciate being on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Anderson to read this item into the record.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone 1.46-acre parcel from B2 Community Business District to I1 Light Industrial District, conditional, I1 Light Industrial to London Bridge Industrial Park west of Naval Air Station Oceana. They propose to construct a three-story climate-controlled cell storage facility with a building footprint of 35,600 square feet and a total area of 106,800 square feet. We have not heard any opposition, so we put it on a consent.
Thank you very much. Item number 11, Charlotte Nessuk. Is there a representative here? Welcome.
Hi, my name's Charlotte Nessuk, representing myself. I've read all the recommendations from the staff, and I accept all of them. It's to make baby food in my home, so.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I do want to take the time to thank Marcel, who's been incredible throughout this whole process and made it very easy for me.
We're so delighted to hear that. Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the agenda? Excuse me, the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Cromwell to read this item into the record.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a home occupation to operate a commercial kitchen within a single-family dwelling on an R 7.5 residential district zone parcel in the Christopher Farms neighborhood. It is anticipated that no customers will be coming to the site to purchase products, as all products will be sold off-site. No signs or advertisements are proposed for the property. We have five letters of approval and no opposition, so the Commission moves to approve this application.
Thank you very much. Our next item is item number 13, LaFleur Properties. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Lee LaFleur, and I'm representing LaFleur Properties, and I would like to say that Elizabeth Noack has been nothing but fantastic and wonderful in assisting me in this project, and I greatly appreciate her assistance.
Oh, well, thank you so much for sharing that. And are the conditions acceptable to you?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. You may be seated. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Anderson to read this item into the record.
Okay, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for truck and trailer rental and order to rent U-Haul vehicles at the automobile repair garage at 440 South Lynn Haven Road. The applicant has rented U-Haul vehicles from their site in the past and submitted application for a conditional use permit upon receiving notice of zoning violation. Hearing no objections, we put it on a consent.
Thank you very much. Item number 14, Hussein Sorani. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Kyle Corte. I'm an attorney with Walcott Rivers in Virginia Beach. I represent the applicant for agenda item 14, which relates to a conditional use permit for an indoor recreational facility at 2058 South Independence Boulevard, and each of the conditions suggested by staff are acceptable.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Parks to read this into the record.
Thank you. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to operate an indoor recreational facility in a vacant building near the intersection of South Independence Boulevard and Buckner Boulevard. The projected, or the facility will provide activities and entertainment for all ages, including electric go-kart, laser tag, rope course, and various other activities. Hours of operation will be 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, 11:00 p.m., or 11:00 a.m. to midnight Friday, and 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Sunday. Hearing no opposition, we've recommended that it be placed on the consent agenda.
If I may ask, the, I think staff updated the hours to have an earlier opening time?
Yes, sorry. It's 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, and 8:00 a.m. to midnight on Saturday, Friday and Saturday.
That's correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Our next item is agenda item number 15, Jim Lutz. I believe the representative is via WebEx. Madam Clerk?
Correct. Calling Mary Ann Cox. She's not on. Okay. It appears she's not on WebEx right now.
Hello, could you please state your name for the record?
She's not on. I'm sorry. She's not on WebEx right now. Oh, okay.
Okay, so we'll go on to the next agenda item, number 16, which is Jeff Jackowitz. Is there a representative here representing agenda item number 16? This application is a short-term rental. There are no letters of opposition, and it meets the requirements for the short, for it to become a short-term rental. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Plumley to read this into the record.
Briefly, this is a short-term rental application at 30428 Street, Unit 103. There are a number of short-term rentals at this location. Our amazing staff has checked all the boxes to make sure it comports with all the ordinance requirements, and therefore, there's no objection to it being placed on the consent agenda.
Rachel Shion?
Madam Clerk, by any chance, is the application for agenda 15 on?
She is not.
She is not?
No.
Although the applicant's not with us, we have reviewed this application. It's a conditional use permit for a short-term rental. It meets all the requirements for a short-term rental at the oceanfront, and then hearing no opposition, I've asked Commissioner Beiler to read this into the record.
This is for property at 915 Pacific Avenue, Unit D. It is an application for a short-term rental. There are many other short-term rentals already in that building. They're prevalent throughout the property. I think there are 16 already approved. There is one assigned parking place associated with the unit, and all conditions seem acceptable based on the considerations above, and staff recommended approval, as well as the conditions. It is appropriate for the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, that is our last item on the consent agenda. The Planning Commission places the following applications on the consent agenda. Items number one, four and five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, and 16.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent as read by the Vice Chair?
I move that these items be approved by consent.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Anderson, and we make note that we do have an abstention in number nine by Commissioner Plumley?
And if I need to abstain, from number three.
Okay.
That's not on consent, though.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, we'll call that out on the next one. That's our first regular hearing. All right, votes, then? Ready for the vote?
Yeah, vote is now open. By a vote of 11 to 0, agenda items number one, four, five, seven, eight, nine, with one abstention from Commissioner Plumley, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, and 16 have been recommended for approval.
All right, thank you. So, that concludes our consent, and those that did get approved, if you can get with your representative with the Planning Department, let you know when you'll be in front of City Council. Clerk, if we could now move forward with the regular agenda?
Yep. First up on our regular agenda is agenda item number three, Mary Lively. It's a subdivision variance request for Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations at parcel, at the parcel directly east of 1140 Rollingwood Arch and north of 89989 Autumn Harvest Drive in District One.
You can come forward, the representative, and state your name?
Mary Lively.
Yeah, the representative, thank you. We'll call each one of you. How you doing?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Mike Inman, Inman Strickler, here to represent Mary Lively on this application. We have exhibits that we would need to refer to, need to pass out to everyone. As you, as you heard this morning, there's a, there seems to be a lot to this application when you start to dig into the facts and the background on the property. This has been a litigation, and there's been a lawsuit that was initiated by us because of the fact that the neighbor in Lot 16A, that you heard about this morning, that was part of the subdivision at hand, was not willing to cooperate with the use of the property as a residence by the applicant here. And as a result, there was, and I've, the packet that you have contains the order from that, and I want to point out a couple things in that order. I realize I've only got 10 minutes to do all this. And I also want to let you know that present is Mary Lively, who is the owner of the property. A gentleman sitting to her right is here in case you have questions about the site plan. That is a part of the packet for the building of the house. And my partner, Jeannie Lauer, is sitting there next to Mary, should there be any questions such. So, looking at the court order that I passed out, I want to point out first quickly that the first paragraph states there is a valid the first paragraph states there is a valid express easement in favor of Mary Lively for the property known as 15A for ingress egress across the property of Hawkins. It was a recognition of an easement that actually had been developed and recorded with various deeds over a period of almost 40 years, from 1979 to the, to the time of this suit. The third paragraph says that Mary Lively would be permitted to improve the easement by installing a driveway with an improved and paved surface no more than 10 feet wide with an apron at Autumn Harvest Drive that may be as wide, but not wider than required by governmental permitting. And paragraph 5 is a requirement to give notice to the neighboring property, formerly 16A, now has become, which we'll get into, Lot 1 and another subdivision, to give notice to that neighbor that they're commencing, or that shall be accessing the easement area across Lot 1 on a daily basis for purposes of construction of an approved driveway and residential structure, and thereafter on a daily basis as customarily employed by owners and occupants of residential real property. So that's some important provisions that are set forth in the court order. I also provided to you a series of deeds, which I don't expect to go through in any great detail, but I wanted you to have them because in each case, it contains a easement for access, ingress, and egress to the property from Autumn Harvest Drive across and through Lot 16A. Now, trying to not get confused, but we'll get there eventually. Lot 16A was part of a six-lot subdivision, which contained lots that would have initially appeared to be not developable, not buildable, because they didn't have street access. So it was necessary for, at the time of these deeds, running from 1979 all the way up to 2001, when Mary Lively obtained a property, to make sure there was a express easement carried forward for access to Autumn Harvest Drive from her Lot 15A. And that's what those deeds accomplished. There is also a, I would like you to note attached, I think it's the last document, there's a plat of Stratford Green. It may not be the last one. There is a plat, at the bottom right, says subdivision of Stratford Green. In the upper left, you see Autumn Harvest Drive. It's the very upper left-hand corner of the plat, where initially, Autumn Harvest Drive dead-ended into Lot 16A. In the, probably 2000, or 1986, there was a extension of Autumn Harvest Drive, which, as you can see on there, took it past, they've, they've already shown on here Lot 1. Lot 1 on this plat used to be 16A, and then it runs within 10 feet of 15A. Doesn't show up clearly on your plat, 15A is next to 14A, but that's the Mary Lively property. So the curve of the road did not, for some reason, make it all the way to the property line of 15A. And fortunately, that property has benefited by an express easement to get to Autumn Harvest Then the last thing is, at the bottom right corner of a plat that we just gave you, it says it's a replat of Lot 16A. Which is interesting because what occurred back in 1986 is the owner of Lot 16A took it out without any discussion with anyone, took it out of the subdivision, and relocated it into a new plat, a subdivision of Bellamy Manor. So the, I'm sorry, Strat, let's see, what is it? Bellamy Manor, yeah, okay. So there was a notation. Sorry, I'm standing here for a second. On the plat, but, but the fact that it was to be used for residential use only. However, Lot 16A was removed and made Lot 1, and a house was built on it. And so for that reason, when Ms. Lively purchased, well, she first had Lot 15R, which was attached to 15A. However, that was, you know, 20 years before. She had every reason to believe that the express easement and her deed had existed, that had existed since the inception of 15A, together with the example set by Lot 16 being terminated and made into Lot 1 with a construction of a home. It's all indicated that at some later point, she would be able to construct a home on her Lot 15A, as she had.
Mr. Inman, your time's exceeded, and if I can call you up on a rebuttal, maybe you can bring that up. But because your time has exceeded, I need to get to the opposition, and then we can call you back up.
Okay.
You had 10 minutes. You passed that.
My time's up?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Sorry. There was a light blinking in front of you, so. Can I call you back up?
Pardon?
Can we call you back up?
Sure.
Is there any opposition? Please come forward.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have three speakers in opposition.
We have three speakers?
Yeah. I'm going to start with Clifford Ramsmooch.
That's correct.
Awesome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Planning Commission. My name is Clifford Ramsmooch. I am the property owner for 989 Autumn Harvest Drive, which is Lot 1 Stratford Green, and I am in opposition to the subdivision variance request. Also, I'm in complete agreement with the staff recommendation for a denial. They did a very, I feel like they did a very detailed analysis of the request, so I'm in complete agreement with that. And I'm in opposition because any development of that lot will result in physical and subsequently monetary damages to the property that I own, and that is all.
Any questions? I have one. So this document that was just brought to us, there's something on here that I wasn't aware of.
Mm-hmm.
But you're familiar with the court order?
For the easement?
Yeah.
Somewhat.
But there's a statement in here on page 2, paragraph 5, that I wasn't aware of. It's kind of completely changed my whole valuation of this, but it does say, "and residential structure" in the court order. I did not know this until I just saw it.
I wasn't aware of it either.
Yeah. You can have mine if you'd like.
Oh, sure.
I circled it. You can have it. Next speaker?
I do have a question on this speaker. Sorry. When did you purchase your, this Lot 16?
It was August 27, 2023.
2023.
Last year.
Gotcha.
So we have recently moved to the property.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Next speaker?
Brad Wesler, followed by our WebEx speaker, Dennis Carlson.
Yes, sir, if you can just state your name?
Yes, sir. My name is Brad Wesler.
Okay.
All right. My name is Brad Wesler, and I respectfully asking the members of the Planning Commission to vote against the request to deviate from the required lot width and street line frontage on property zoned R10. My wife and I purchased the residence located at 1140 Rollingwood Arch, which is adjacent to the lot in question, over 15 years ago. Our property lies directly to the west of the lot in question. Prior to the sale of the property, Ms. Lively made the conscious decision to subdivide the lot that the residents initially set upon since it was built in 1971. When this decision was made, the lot behind our residence, the one in question, became landlocked, and according to several city codes, a structure cannot lawfully be built on this property. Specifically, the lot does not have the required access to roadway within the required proper street frontage as mandated by current city code. City codes are put in place for specific reasons. While we might not agree with all of them, the codes are established to maintain order, safety, and consistency for the majority of the community. The codes are designed to ensure the government has the best entrance for the entire community in mind. By approving this deviation, the Planning Commission is putting the wishes of just one person, a person who does not even live in this community, above those who do reside here and are directly impacted by this seemingly simple decision. If this request were to be approved, several negative impacts would immediately take place. First, land would be forcibly taken from the current residents of 989, who just spoke and stated they did not want to give up a portion of his front yard to have the required driveway built to that lot. Four mature trees would be had to remove, and substantial construction to remove a sewer line would have to take place. The land that served as part of our lot, 1140 Rollingwood Arch, my backyard since the residence was built 1971 until it was subdivided in 2009, would basically have a house crammed onto it. It barely fits to the lot dimensions. Finally, it is important to note that 13 residents are also directed by this decision. To the north of the lot in question, 13 families have similar lots and enjoy property as it was originally designed. These families would also lose the easement access they currently have to the rear of the properties. When I try to explain to you how this decision would negatively impact our community, the analogy that keeps coming to mind is putting a square peg in a round hole. Yes, you can cut it, force it, and jam it in there, and eventually it'll fit, but is that really the best option? For over 50 years, city codes have designated a lot in question as unbuildable despite the changes. I'm respectfully asking each of you to vote no on this request and allow me, my neighbor directly behind me, the residents of 989 Autumn Harvest Drive, to keep our lots and land as it was originally intended to be used. While the lines on the screen may not seem too much to each of you, they represent the quality of life each of us hopes to enjoy for at least another 50 years. And I'd also like to point that Ms. Hawkins fought this, who was the resident of 16A, for over 15 years until her death in litigation. That is why things have suddenly changed drastically. And I'd also like to add that I have petitioned, or where I gathered 23 signatures, which may not seem like much, but it's a very small neighborhood, that are also against this approval being approved. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Plumley.
Mr. Wesler, were you involved in the litigation at all, directly?
Not directly, no, sir. I'm very aware of what was going on.
You were aware of it, but you didn't participate in. And you said Ms., I'm sorry, I forgot her name, the owner of 16A.
Yes, Ms. Hawkins.
Ms. Hawkins. Was she the owner at the time that 161 had been subdivided away?
Correct.
She was. And so she got the benefit of that subdivision. Isn't that fair?
I'm not sure if I understand that question.
So, so she held on to 16A and then had 161, that backside of her lot, I don't know what else to call it, that that had been taken and then put in this separate subdivision. Is that fair?
She purchased the lot in the back of the property, so.
Okay, so she was 161, she was the prior owner before the gentleman that just came up. Is that fair?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, now I understand.
She built the home.
I see. At the time of that subdivision in 1986, were you an owner in that subdivision, that community?
I was not.
You were not, okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? None, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have the WebEx now?
Yep. Calling our last speaker via WebEx, Dennis Carlson.
Okay, thank you. I see that I am unmuted. I am a resident on Autumn Harvest Drive, and my only knowledge of this is, having looked at the document that was provided to the Planning Commission, the proposed plat, it seems pretty obvious to me that if this were to be approved, the variance that is, that would really affect the, not just the quality of our life and access to the.
Send me comments for opposition?
I'm sorry, I don't know if you, if you heard me. Yeah, this is a comment in opposition. And it looks like it would violate the property rights of the owner of 989 in terms of building a.
Just say your name.
My name is Jeannie Lauer. I'm an attorney with Inman and Strickler. I represented Ms. Lively in the litigation related to the easement, which is why I've been asked her. But with all due respect to Mr. Wesler, who purchased 15R, which is the house, which is the lot with the house, and Ms. Lively owns 15A, which is behind it. She owned both of them. She sold to Mr. Wesler. Mr. Wesler was aware of the fact and required a release, that she would never seek to go through his property to get access to a road. He was intimately familiar with the fact that there was an express easement and required Ms. Lively to enter into, wasn't interested in purchasing 15A. So he wanted to make sure that she only tried to use the easement that she already had through 16, because she had already stated her intention to build a house or to try and build a house, which is what she's been trying to do since the very beginning. The last document that Mr. Inman tendered up to you in his packet was, the city simply required that there be a replating of 16, where the house was built, that Ms. Hawkins lived in, that the first gentleman now lives in. And all it said was, "this is a replat prepared for review and approval of a building site." And with that, all of the negative language about not being a building site was gone. It was simply approved by the city. No variance was necessary. Built a house within a few months. Yes, sir.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. She's not finished. I can wait. I just didn't want to forget my question. There's so much around my head. This, this was, this 1986 plat was signed by the planning director.
That's correct.
And the director of public works.
That's correct. And that was all that was required. No consent on behalf of 15, 14, 13, 12, and 11, any of the other lots. The original appendage, according to Mr. Wasserman and Mr. Compton and Mr. Thompson, who were the purchasers, and re-subdivided the property from parcel B from Ms. White down to the six parcels, was that they appended the note simply to indicate that they weren't going to build on it. And their plan was perhaps to make them part of. But if you see the succession, there was never a deficit in the property in that it couldn't be used as a buildable site. There was nothing required by the city. It was a note voluntarily placed by, by the individuals who purchased the property, and as you can see, was readily dispensed with by 16. As far as Mr. Ramsmooch, who owns 16 now and is talking about his trees, no matter what this Planning Commission does, Ms. Lively has a right to build her driveway through. She's going to take down those trees, and she's going to put that driveway in. There's no doubt about the fact that she has the right to do that. The only issue is, does she build a residential structure? That was always anticipated in the litigation. Kevin Kemp, the zoning administrator here, testified that that would not be a problem so long as it otherwise met the requirements. This is a lot that is twice the size required. It's 27,000 feet. 10,000 is all that's required, so it is not squeezing anything in. And Mr. Ramsmooch purchased the property with full knowledge of this order. It was required to be recorded. It was recorded June 14, 2023. He didn't purchase the property until a few months later. He had intimate knowledge. If he was misled by the sellers as to any aspect of that, he had a clear order that told him, everything that you've just read about a driveway, a residential structure, removal of trees, he bought with full knowledge of what was going to happen with that property. And we made every effort to have the property, the driveway, moved down. It would have been in the middle of the property rather than farther down the driveway placement if Ms. Lively hadn't otherwise agreed. But that's what we were always striving for, was to cause the least impact. But the bottom line, she has had these rights. It was not self-inflicted. She had these rights. It was never a landlocked parcel. It always had an easement from the moment of its creation. That's all the court found. It didn't create a new easement. It merely observed that there already existed one, that it was not a landlocked parcel, that it was intended for vehicular traffic, which, under the city code, is actually a street, because anything which is provided for city traffic, public or private, is a street. So. So she has a street, and the analysis done by staff doesn't account for that.
Does that, I'm sorry, may I ask a question? And so that would afford her the right along that public street to place any type of easement necessary for utilities, for access to the lot? Is that also true?
That is also true, but the order, if you look at it, also calls for the placement of utilities. It says that she has the right to relocate, move, or place, as in new placement of utilities in the driveway easement to the extent that that's necessary. We made sure that that was something that would be available. So we've covered all the bases in the litigation, and this was a five-year process. Don't think that Judge Mahan overlooked any aspect or detail. If any of you know him, you know. Every i was dotted, every t was crossed. Everything which was necessary to enable Ms. Lively to use her property that she has owned for a long period of time and exercise all of her rights pursuant to the terms of the city code were followed. We did everything right. Judge said we had a right to move forward with it. And more importantly, without even a glance at Ms. Lively, you let 16A, Ms. Hawkins, build her house when it had a building lot restriction. All she had to do was file a new plat. Didn't cost her nearly as much. I would simply ask that you continue to afford her the same rights that were apparently casually given to someone who had never lived in the neighborhood before. And Ms. Lively would very much like to be able to live there again.
Would the opposition, is there any other things you need to say or rebut to them? It's just a chance.
I believe that it's very clear if there are any questions about the order, the intent, the long history of this case, or the use of the property, I would welcome them, but we're just asking for everyone to be fair.
Mr. Plumley?
Just if you could cover your thoughts, because in my view, this has been about the variance request. Okay, so let's just move aside the ownership rights and talk about the factors of the variance. If you could address the comments of staff with regards to those factors and your rebuttal to those, I think that would be important to understand.
Well, I think first of all, it's important to recognize this is not a landlocked property, because it always possessed a street under the city code definition and easement from its inception. It's on the original subdivision plat. It's in the deeds. So it already exists. It's not landlocked, and that's error. The other issue as to the analysis has to do with whether or not, the city code also says that you just have to have access to a public street, which she does. That's under the provision. As far as the self-inflicted harm, that's not true. Self-inflicted, when the Supreme Court talks about that and analyzes that statute, has to do with whether or not you have already done something for which you are asking forgiveness. In other words, if she built the house and then said, "Hey, can I have a variance?" That's self-inflicted. If you do something wrong and ask someone to fix it, the old forgiveness versus permission, that's self-inflicted by definition. As a matter of law, self-inflicted is not merely owning the property. When they say she sold the other lot in 2007 and created the harm, that's impossible, because the staff's objection is that there is a notation on the plat that says you can't build. Whether she owns 15A or 15R or doesn't own 15R, it's the same thing. How can it be self-inflicted if their objection would be the same whether she owned all of the lots around it or not? So that's just legally wrong. And does it create a hardship? Yes. If you deny her the variance, then under the old standard, which was higher legally, which said that you deny her the use of the property at all, the only thing she can do is build a house on the property. If you deny her the variance, you have completely denied her any opportunity for the use of her property. That is a hardship. It is an economic hardship. It is an overall hardship. It is the complete loss of the use of the property. So it fits the definition. It's in the disjunctive in the statute. And your staff has already said that otherwise it meets the criteria. They just had an objection about whether or not that was a self-imposed hardship. It was not. She had the right to rely on 16 having 20-plus years of having a house there. And she knew she had an easement since she originally purchased the property. So there's no self-infliction in this case. This is just a question about meeting the terms potentially of the variance rather than just replating it. And she's clearly entitled to do that, because there is no other alternative for the use of the property.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Mr. Comber.
Why did it take five years for the judge to resolve the matter? And you said that she's already had the easement since day one?
Because the other side fought it. There were multiple continuances. There was COVID. So we had a pretty significant break in there. It was filed in 2019. COVID came in 20, derailed us from two trial dates. But ultimately, it was determined. I think they stopped fighting about whether or not. At first, they said there was no express easement, that we had abandoned it because we weren't using the property, because we couldn't use the property, because they wouldn't let us get access to it or build a house on it. So it's sort of circular, but I think the order speaks for itself. It resolves all of the issues, tells us everything that we need to know. Plus, they wouldn't agree to where the driveway placement was. So while we had a preliminary, we had an order allowing the easement a year prior to the issuance of this order, the final order, the judge asked us if we could please try and find a location. And we had to work with the city to find what the farthest to the bottom of the property, we could put the driveway. That required some coordination of effort. And so the city told us where the farthest was, because there are some things we can't move. I think some stormwater drains that could not be readily moved. So we were working with the city and with Ms. Hawkins' counsel to try and find that most effective, least impactful on the property location of the driveway, which is what you have now. The judge determined that that was the least impactful.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, you may be seated.
Thank you very much.
Now we'll close and open for discussion with the commissioners. Would anyone like to start? Naomi, go ahead.
Does any of the opposition have any statements to go against what was already heard by legal?
We're in closed session now.
Oh, because I think you wanted to say something earlier. That's why I'm trying to come back. I don't believe they can come back up.
Yeah, we're in closed.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Because I know he wanted to say something.
You want to make your.
Actually, I spoke to Clifford as I was doing the assessment, and I was looking at what was actually positioned by staff and the challenges defining the variance. And that's really what was in question. And I still am in question, in quandary of that. I know that staff had presented the court order stating that the court order is explicitly to access the site and does not grant the applicant the right to build. But now seeing the court order, it actually now states differently. And so that's why that was the greatest concern for me, that if a court order was stated that there was no intent or was not granting the applicant to be able to build, but now looking at this newly, I love having these new documents, day of, but it actually states here that the court order does allow, and it actually expresses, an approved driveway and residential structure. So that totally goes against what was presented to me earlier. I agree about the hardship. When I read this originally, it was like you sold 15R, and 15 was not intended to be built on. And I felt like that hardship was self-inflicted. That's how I defined the self-infliction, although you felt otherwise. But those are my two aspects in regards to the variance. And if anybody could speak on that. So it's kind of concerning as to conflicting information being presented.
All right, Mr. Plumley?
Yeah, I appreciate everybody's information about this side. I took a close look at the lot and looking back and knowing there was this express easement going all the way is very important to me. To know that there was 161, or whatever it's called, that had been deeded out without objection, signed by planning, signed by Public Works is very important to me. To know that the order was filed in May of 2023, and the person bought their house in August of 2023. After that filing is very important to me to understand, because people have title insurance, they have lawyers working on closings. They go through all this to make sure what they're buying and selling is lawful. And I see that her rights were protected, and I see that the court went far enough to demonstrate in an order its intent. Looking back at the idea of hardship, well, if she couldn't be on a public street at that point and was later given a defined area, I believe that is a hardship. And it's not self-imposed if she held that right. That's a flipped view from what has been expressed, and I understand that. But it's important we understand how much this person's been through to have this right in this lot. And while we're going to say 161 can be its own standalone lot, but hers cannot be, even though she had this right, I don't think that would be appropriate. So I've moved to approve this variance for those reasons and the reasons given by the applicant.
All right, so any other comments? Okay, oh, yeah, okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Plumley.
A second.
Second by Ms. Hippen. And I have one abstention by Ms. Beiler. Are you going to read something?
I have a letter on file. I'm abstaining from comment and from vote because the law firm where I work was involved in the litigation earlier.
The vote is now open. Mr. March?
By a vote of eight to three with one abstention from Ms. Beiler, item number three has been recommended for approval.
All right, thank you. The next item? What's our next item?
I was checking on pronunciation.
Seven to three?
Yeah. Agenda item number six, Adacoche PJ 22001 LLC is a request for conditional rezoning from AG1 Agricultural to conditional R10 Residential at the parcels west of Bluegrass Lane and east of 2044 Aloma Drive in District 2.
Thank you very much, Chairman, members of the commission, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney. I'm here representing Tunde Adekoje, who is with us this afternoon. Tunde is a local architect, a very accomplished one. And this is a unique proposal to construct, develop and construct 10 homes on seven and a half acres, an extension of Bluegrass Lane at the back of the Princess Anne Meadows subdivision on a piece of property that is essentially surrounded by residential development of greater, slightly, but in every case, greater densities than what is proposed here. The staff report indicates it's 1.69 units per acre, but my math on a 10-unit subdivision on seven and a half acres, it comes out a little bit less than that. I think it's one and a quarter units per acre, but it's not high density by any stretch of the imagination. It is in a noise zone, and it is also completely consistent with our policies with regard to NES Oceana, and the joint review committee has so opined. The application is also, with one exception, completely consistent with our comprehensive land use plan. The proposal is for a green development. These homes, which all will be designed and built by the applicant for sale, will be high-grade lead, entitled to be high-grade lead certified if anyone wants to submit for lead certification. Everything about it is futuristic. The, excuse me, the project would be unique to Virginia Beach and something that we, I think, as a city, should be attempting to encourage looking forward. And that includes trees and greenery. The trees on the site, obviously Dominion Power has come in and cleared 140-foot easement for the wind energy project, which I'll talk about a little bit. But the rest of the property that would be developed to the greatest degree possible, the trees on the property would be retained. Obviously, we all know from a storm drainage perspective that it does require some trees to be removed, but it's not the applicant's intent to remove the first tree beyond what is absolutely necessary in order to develop these 10 lots with 10 houses on them. The property has no wetlands on it that are defined as such by the city of Virginia Beach. It is entirely developable land. And the DEQ has approved any impacts to what would be core-defined, upland, non-title wetlands. And under the Sackett decision, there's no connection to any body of water. So any concerns that none of this property or some of this property isn't developable are not valid and not accurate. Excuse me. The issue that is before us today, we have done everything we can do to try to avoid. But unfortunately, that's become unavoidable that we come forward and move this process along. The subject property is bisected by a, on paper, road, initially called the Southeastern Expressway. It was first put on the master transportation plan in 1991. It was discussed for a couple of years or so prior to that time. Initially, it was 150-foot wide right-of-way. A number of years later, in order to curry favor with the federal government for funding purposes, it was expanded to a 300-foot right-of-way with a southeastern Parkway and Greenbelt name given to it. And now, 33 years later, 33 years that this property's been subjected to this idea that somewhere along the line is going to be a road put through, no effort made to acquire any right-of-way on the property. We jettisoned the southeastern Parkway and Greenbelt. And now we're, and the city owns right-of-way on both sides of this property too, by the way. And so the city now wants to have a two-lane road from Holland Road to Indian River Road, which I do understand that aspect of this. But a two-lane road does not require a 160-foot wide right-of-way. Indian Town Center, Virginia Beach Boulevard, Independence Boulevard, those right-of-ways are 120-foot wide. So we need 160-foot right-of-way to build a two-lane road? No, we do not. We absolutely do not. You build a two-lane road with a multipurpose trail and all the bells and whistles you might want in a 70-foot right-of-way without a problem at all. Now, this morning, I think the world of Rick Lohman, one of the best people we have working for the city, and he was very honest. He said exactly what I intended to say. There's no idea when that two-lane road is ever going to get built. We don't know. I frankly don't think I'll live long enough to see it get built. So once again, we have a piece of property that has been subjected to this idea that there's going to be a big road put through it that we now know isn't going to happen. And we can't do anything with the property. So an approval today, a recommendation for approval today, will put the onus where it belongs, on the city of Virginia Beach, to make a determination. Do they want the right-of-way through here or not? And how much do they really need? So the, and I'll go back to Dominion Power. The wind energy project has only been around for between five and six years. What did Dominion Power do? They came out to, "We need an easement across your property, 140 feet wide. We're going to pay you for it." And they did just that. And it is just, it is. is, again, I'm the biggest fan of Virginia Beach. I'm born and raised here, and everybody knows, I'm cheerleader. But this isn't the way you run a railroad. If the city desires to have a 70-foot right-of-way through here so that one day, or whatever the right-of-way with this, for that matter, that one day we'll be able to put a two-lane road here, then step up to the plate. But when this road was originally conceived, all this area, interfacility traffic area, et cetera, et cetera, most of that did not exist. Almost all of it didn't exist. It wasn't until after the year 2000, the MOU and all the deal with BRAC, that we did all these things to protect it. This perfect timing, you got to hear all about it this morning from Diane Hicks, okay? That's why this road, that's one of the reasons why this big old road is no longer really necessary. And it's also because there's not going to be much development in the interfacility traffic area other than open space recreational, et cetera. So the, again, I'm not here to tell you that that road will never be needed, but the chances that most of us will live long enough to see when it's needed is pretty remote. Should the city get some right-of-way for that potential day? Sure, if they want it. But you can't tell somebody that's been sitting here, now, my client hasn't owned this for the entire, you know, 33 years, but the previous owners were saddled with this. And it's, again, nothing's stopping the city during the subdivision review process that, as we all know, with stormwater will take another year, that they can come in and figure out what, if they want a right-of-way. No one's going to build a house on these lots if it's where the city wants a right-of-way and they're willing to make a motion, allocate the money, buy the property for the right-of-way. But it is not equitable. I don't think it's, frankly, constitutional to sit there and just tell somebody, sorry, you know, you're stuck for the next 50 years, you can't do anything with your property. So it's, I don't think anybody can deny it's a good application, a good project. It's consistent with everything in our comprehensive plan, except for a road that was, has been on the master transportation plan for 33 years, has now been jettisoned, and the city wants some type of road to take its place. Again, city's perfectly within its rights to put that in place, but they've got to come out, step up and do something. And that's what we did last August when we deferred this case. We thought that counsel would step up and that they would figure out what kind of right-of-way they want and deal with it and so we can move forward. And I'll shut my mouth.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon?
Yes.
Yeah. Ms. Beiler?
Mr. Burdon, you've made your position regarding the road loud and clearly. What's your position on the cross-city shared use path that is supposed to go through there in one of two places?
Totally, I completely concur. That's, there should be, no one's suggesting that there shouldn't be a multipurpose trail and some landscaping around it. And that's why I said 70 feet, because 70 feet's more than enough, because you don't, two lanes of road are 24 feet. That's nice median, you have nice landscape. But again, that's really the city's determination, but you certainly don't need 160 feet of right-of-way for a two-lane road by any stretch of the imagination and a multipurpose trail. There's also this, Virginia Power easement that, you know, this, none of the property is on, but it comes right up to that, and that's where there also should be a trail. But that has nothing to do with this application. But that's the north-south part. If you, you see, if you see, if you look at the, what's up there on the far-left side, which would be the west side, those two lines that run parallel and bisect the dotted red lines, that's the, used to be the railroad line, went all the way down to Mundon Point Park, and that's an existing easement. In fact, to the, to the north, there is a private road that runs up that, that was done back before we ever had a subdivision ordinance. It's a road that comes in off of Princess Anne Road, right at the access to Princess Anne Meadows, and then comes and goes up to some properties further to the northwest. But that has always been, for many years has been in the comp plan to put a trail down it, but some, some of the neighborhoods, especially to the south, Christopher Farms and all have opposed that. But we have, again, my client is not trying to stand in the way of the city acquiring a reasonable amount of right-of-way to include, you know, a trail. He has no issues with that, and he has no issues with it coming to his neighborhood whatsoever. But 160 feet of right-of-way and no effort made to acquire the property for 33 years is, you know, patience has run out.
Thank you.
Mr. Plumley?
Mr. Burdon, you indicated you took an indefinite deferral and worked with staff in the city to see if there was interest in defining this. I take that to mean, and I asked this question in the informal, has there ever been a motion passed by our legislative body for the road that Public Works is talking about, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, no, there is not. And I, to my knowledge, the, I, you know, counsel, I was told, was briefed, it's been some time ago, but it's, because it's an acquisition issue, it's in closed session. But counsel's been briefed about it, and what I heard back was, you know, there's no money.
Right. And, you know, I take my oath of office very seriously when we are asked to defend the Constitution. I went back and read Article 1, Section 11 of our state constitution, which was updated not that long ago when that big case out of Boston came through on a takings. And it says specifically, "No more private property may be taken than necessary to achieve the stated purpose." And here, we don't have a defined area that I've heard yet, and we don't have a stated purpose by the authorized legislative body that can perform a taking. So that troubles me. Can you address that?
Can I address that?
Yeah.
I think you already have, Mr. Plumley. I don't, I don't think I can, I can add a lot of substance to what you, what you said. It's totally my understanding and has been from, you know, for decades. So again, as I said, my advice to, to our client has been from day one, let's work with the city. Now, let's, you know, we're not trying to get in the way of something that's necessary, but at this point...
But this was the same applicant?
Right.
As of last year?
Oh, yes. This has been in process. We've been through the stormwater process. We've been, yes, we've been in process for this for...
Thank you.
Going on four years. And we've tried to give the city, and the city still has opportunity, you know, to acquire, you know, we're not, we're not, this doesn't foreclose the city's ability to determine they need X number of feet of right-of-way to do what they wish in the future within this, in this area, including all 160 feet if that's what they want to do. But you can't condemn somebody's property that, you know, just sit there and can't do anything with it. That's, that's our problem, is let's just make, make a decision, not this body, but city council needs to make a decision. But you're absolutely correct. And I'm not, and we're not here, my client's not here, trying to threaten anybody. We just, we want to try to be able to have a reasonable use of the property and put it to reasonable use and in a beneficial way all the way around.
All right, thank you. Mr. Parks?
As an architect, I can appreciate the renderings of the houses, but my concern, after hearing the briefing this morning, is in the TA and the ITA areas, there is a defined pattern book, and what is being proposed does not seem to be matching the area around it. Was there any thought?
Well, this is, this is not in the interfacility traffic area, to be clear. The interfacility traffic area is on the west side, southwest side of Princess Anne Road. So this is, this is not in the ITA or transition area, okay? This is, this is good old, you know, Virginia Beach. It's just, it has the ACUS issue with the, with the noise zone, but it doesn't have anything to do with the interfacility area guidelines that Diane was speaking about this morning. And I didn't, I kind of went through that and didn't make that distinction. It's, that, but this road, I brought that into it because the road is designed to provide access from Holland, Princess Anne, and then from Princess Anne to Salem and then to Indian River. That's, that's what they want to have. I mean, again, there's no design for a road. So that, and that area isn't going to develop, other than one for 15, okay? If any, and it won't be hardly any residential. And so that lack of development potential is one of the reasons why they don't need much of a road and it's not going to have, carry a lot of traffic. But this, this piece is not in the ITA, but the road goes through the ITA.
Understood. Just knowing that area, the design that's going in there, obviously, this isn't the body to debate this on. I'm just saying, I don't believe it fits the character of the area it's going into. And I, again, I appreciate the modern design. As an architect, I know there's ways to do green building, sustainable building, but also make it fit the neighborhood that surrounds it.
Well, the neighborhood that, where access is through, this, this is, it is not in the middle of the neighborhood. It is off on its own, at the end of an existing dead-end street that didn't cul-de-sac because they knew this property was developable. And the developers of the neighborhood actually sold one of the three parcels to my client for this development. So it, it really does not have, it's not like it's sitting at the entrance to the neighborhood and you're going through one to get, it is at the tail end on its own separate cul-de-sac. So it is, it's modern and it is unique, but it is, and I don't believe that, I'm not aware of opposition from the folks that you all saw this morning. They're in a totally different neighborhood to the north. So I don't, I don't believe that Princess Anne Meadows is opposed to this application, because I don't really think it impacts them, other than the homes will have cars that drive through their neighborhood to get to Princess Anne Road. But it's really, it is its own little separate enclave. But I, I'm not going to argue that the houses are the same as those in Princess Anne Meadows. But I think if it were somewhere else other than where it is, then it would have a potential impact. But the houses will, again, the houses in Princess Anne Meadows are wonderful houses and they're not inexpensive. These will not hurt their dollar value assessments, I can assure you of that. They will, they will be, because of the circumstances with the Dua Homes like these, there's more cost involved and there's going to be a higher sales price. I don't think there's any, anybody would argue the contrary.
All right. Any other, Mr. Costin, go ahead.
I have difficulty with the city holding the property forever and a day. Now, I lived through the Southeastern project. My neighborhood was at the beginning of it. And people who had suffered for years building their own homes were moved out of those properties and now we don't need it. So I'd support this for approval.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hippen?
So, Mr. Burdon?
Yes, Ms. Hippen.
You know, I was the sole person that went out and looked at this property, okay, on our visit. And, and when I walked in here, I was dead-set against it. But you're one heck of a lawyer.
Oh, you're sweet. Thank you.
And you made, you made some points to convince me to support it, because you're absolutely right. Yes, there's a propose, but nothing's in stone, okay? And, and Mr. Plumley asked the question, and I didn't feel that he got an answer to the question of, has city council voted on this? Now, this road that's proposed, okay?
They had, unless I missed it, and I don't think I did.
Okay.
They have not voted on a replacement road for the Southeastern Parkway in Greenbelt, with the exception, because I was there, of the section between Dam Neck and London Bridge for Amazon.
Yes.
But that's, and that's the only section of this road that I'm aware of, that they've actually voted on, and, and that's being built by Amazon and reimbursed the cost of the road by the city. And it's a two-lane road.
Okay. I am going to vote for this, okay? Because, but my hesitation, my only hesitation, and I have to agree with my architect friend, that the style of home that's going in there is very different from all the homes all around it, okay? So I just want to interject that.
Sure.
They're really neat-looking, don't get me wrong. But I do agree that the city either needs to purchase that land or let him develop it. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hippen. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Mr. Mott?
Could we get clarification from staff about the, what he just stated, making sure everything is accurate?
Sure. So, and I'll give it my best attempt here. And I've got Hank Morrison, that's our comprehensive planning coordinator. But although we have not paid, designed all of that for a new roadway, this is a part of, this segment is part of the existing current master transportation plan, which is part of the comprehensive plan that is currently active. We have not updated either one of those formally yet. So that's just a point of clarification. This is in both of those documents. They have not been changed yet. So I don't, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions? Ms. Beiler?
Ms. Warren, when you say they haven't been updated yet, I understand that that means the new road, whichever it will be, and the new shared use path hasn't been exactly laid out yet, correct? But the old preservation of the city maintaining that for the road that we now know won't go in, but still, the old protection is still in place, is it not? Correct. That's right. So the city basically didn't need to act until it removes that old protection.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a gap in time when they have said, all right, we're not going to do one, and they've hesitated to indicate what they're going to do.
Now, and if you recall too, there was a recent presentation made to city council where they were talking, the, our Public Works Department made a presentation to city council about the various segments of the Southeastern Parkway and what segments they wanted to remain in effect. And there are three, and this is one of those.
Okay. So, thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Mott?
So if this were to go forward, is there an alternative path? Has there been one looked at for the roadway to go through? Or would it just be too, too much to, too many properties to kind of navigate through?
So currently, they're looking at the master transportation plan, and I believe it's only about, what percentage complete? About 40% complete. So I don't believe that they've come up with any alternative or if they've been asked to, especially in this area, come up with an alternative path.
Thank you. All right. Clerk, is there any opposition? Speak.
No, sir.
There aren't any? All right. Are there any more questions, Mr.?
I don't have a question. I was ready to make a motion and just state my piece and move on.
Okay. I'm just going to make one little statement.
Yes, sir.
I'm torn with this too, because, I mean, we're here to make a recommendation to city council, and we've been brought forth some to us that I think city council needs to make a move on. So I just wanted to say that. We're making a recommendation for city council so everyone think straight on this and see what you want to do. All right, got a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to recommend this for approval. Let me, let me explain why. We see right here in the staff report, the city council has acknowledged that there's not a need for construction of the Southeastern Expressway. It states it right in the staff report. Even though it's in the master transportation plan, that means that's been hanging out over the landowner's rights for all these years. We are not a condemning authority. Public Works is not a condemning authority. It is the city council that is a condemning authority. Our recommendation is, does this meet with infill obligations for a construction of this nature? Yes or no? I think it does. That's what we send up to you. You decide if you want to take it. You know, they indefinitely deferred, taken it up there, seen what they would do, and now we're saying, make a decision. That's all. Otherwise, I took an oath of office for this position. I took an oath as an attorney. I'm here to comply with the Constitution, and I don't see how it complies with the Constitution if our legislative body haven't, hasn't clarified this very dicey issue for real people with real ownership interests trying to make housing in a city that desperately needs housing. So therefore, I move to recommend approval.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Plumley, second by Mr. Costin. Are there any comments before we vote? Are there any comments before we vote?
The same here. City council needs to decide.
All right. Vote's open.
The vote is not open. By a vote of nine to three, item number six has been recommended for approval.
Thank you all very much. Hope everybody has a nice Independence Day coming up.
Thank you all. Our next item?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I wanted to say Kay has been great to work with all these years, and that Kay is, and Bill McCully was a wonderful friend and wonderful to work with, and Kay has done just what Bill did. He's left you all in good hands with Tori. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Juneteenth. Happy Juneteenth. Yes, happy Juneteenth, McCully.
All right, go ahead.
Agenda item number 12, NMPC for Fairfield SCLLC, is a subdivision variance request for Section 4.4 of the subdivision regulations at 5242 Fairfield Shopping Center and 5236 Providence Road in District 3.
Just come forward and state your name, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission, for the record, Rob Beaman, Virginia Beach Lane Use Attorney with the Troutman Pepper Law Firm, here today on behalf of the applicant. I wanted to just join Eddie and the commission quickly in congratulating Kay on her retirement. I've worked with Kay now for about 17 years, and it's been a pleasure the entire time. And as I mentioned to her the other day, she's my resource on Virginia zoning law. No matter where I have cases, I always call Kay and bounce things off of her, and she's been kind enough to take those questions, and I really appreciate that. So best wishes, Kay, moving forward, and Tori, we look forward to working with you as well. Regarding the application before you today, this is an application to create a new lot for the existing McDonald's over at the Fairfield Shopping Center, which has been on the property for a long time. No new improvements are proposed at all. This is just an exercise of trying to make a separate lot for this McDonald's site. The McDonald's site itself, which is proposed for subdivision, which is shown on your screen right here, would meet all the applicable criteria under the zoning ordinance for a separate lot. The issue, and that's bringing up this application, is the underlying lot, which was created lawfully back in 1979 by a plat that was approved by the planning director and others with the city. Is there any way we could do the picture of the existing lot? Yeah, so, yeah, so this configuration of the lot, if you include the green with the rest of the lot, is the current configuration that was originally subdivided back in 1979. And we're not proposing to alter any component of the lot other than that little green parcel shown here, which is where the current McDonald's sits. And this application would create a separate subdivided parcel just for that parcel itself. The reason for this application, the lot as it was subdivided in 1979, has a little stem you'll see to the right of that green parcel, which is 25 feet wide, which is where it touches the right-of-way on Providence Road. The way the city code determines lot width, it's where the skinniest portion of the property touches the road. That's been 25 feet for, since 1979. We're not proposing to change that at all, and so it's a, it's a lot that's non-conforming now, and it would be notwithstanding this application. Just because we're modifying the boundaries of the underlying lot, which is non-conforming, we need to come through for additional approval. So with that, we certainly thank you for your consideration. I did want to add that the condition that was proposed this morning regarding limiting access along the new McDonald's parcel is fine with the applicant. We're amenable to that. That, we thank you for your consideration.
Any questions? Mr. Beaman? None?
I had a question, but I asked Mr. Beaman between the informal and the formal, and now I better understand the layout, and I don't, I don't have an issue with it.
All right. Is there any speakers?
No, sir.
No? All right. Mr. Parks?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item with the attachment that they provide a one-foot, no ingress egress easement on the front of the new parcel.
All right, I have a motion, Mr. Parks?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hippen. Vote's open.
By a vote of 10 to 1, agenda item number 12 has been recommended for approval.
All right, that concludes our formal hearing for June 12. Thank you.